All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started this evening. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner for Farmington, and this is the Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. We are going to start with a roll call of commission members. Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Here. Matthew's online. Robert Canto.
Here.
Roja Afshar.
Present.
David St. Germain.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Scott Halston.
Here.
And our alternates Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Kayla Zimmerman. Kayla is absent, and Mike Tucci, for the record, is absent. Mr. Chair, it is all yours.
Thank you, Shannon. Appreciate that. Welcome, everybody, to the October 21st Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. Going to start with the legal notice, please, Liz.
Okay, I'll be glad to read that. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, October 21st, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Michael J., is it Tassinelli or Taconelli? I'm not sure which. Application for special permit for home business internet sales located at 32 Junior Road in our 12 zone. Alexander Farah and Holly Benson, excuse me, application for special permit for expanded home greater than 30% of existing square footage in excess of 2,400 square feet finished living area and 3,200 square feet total area at 111 Wood Pond Road in an R20 zone. The Farmington Historical Society Incorporated, application for special permit for charitable and philanthropic uses to house its headquarters and one accessory apartment at 729 Farmington Avenue in an R80 zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Monteith Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the town website. A copy of this proposal is online, or you may acquire it by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this third day of October 2024.
Thank you, Liz. Appreciate that. So we've got a few new business items, and then that'll be followed by our three public hearings. So be patient with us if you're here for the public hearings. But our first new business item, Sign Pro, a sign application for property located at 838 Farmington Ave.
Okay. At the moment, I am not seeing the representative for Sign Pro.
Okay.
Hi, Shannon.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, hi. I wasn't sure if you could hear me. Sorry to interject, but I am here. Christine, go ahead for Sign Pro.
The phone number. Okay. Yep. Chrissy, go right ahead.
All right. Thank you to the Planning and Zoning Commission for hearing this. This property has specifically 838 to 850 Farmington Ave, Epicure Plaza, has a hardship of safety and visibility of signage due to several different factors. The state right-of-way is 24 feet from the curb to the edge of the proposed sign, which means the sign must be much closer to the building than normally would be ideal for visibility. The driveway is on Route 4, where Route 10 intersects immediately after a blind, or excuse me, a sharp curve, which impedes visibility of signage. This particular roadway regulates all traffic on and off the highways and in and out of Farmington, meaning there is always a heavy and chaotic traffic load from all directions. There is an existing sign structure there that is 76 square feet overall, sits several feet below street grade, is completely obscured to traffic heading east by vehicles waiting at the stoplight to leave the parking lot, and majorly obscured to traffic heading west by the bus shelter structure. Overall, it is hard to read and interpret, especially while driving in heavy traffic at high speeds. There was a potential replacement sign approved in 2019 at 25 square feet that did not represent all of the tenants in the plaza. Since then, we have worked with town staff to address their requests and compromise on the proposed sign design. The newly proposed sign that we are presenting tonight is 4.4 square feet and 5 inches over what is allowed by right. The proposed sign is much easier to read, has maximized signage area on a smaller structure than existing, better contrast in colors that will also match the site improvements that the plaza has been making, will be located before the driveway as opposed to the existing sign after the driveway, and will also sit several feet higher at street grade. We have worked with the town, as I said earlier, to reduce the overall size of the structure. We have removed the plaza name, increased the height and contrast of the address numbers for visibility, managed to include all tenants in the plaza on the sign while still giving major tenant's proportional representation, and most importantly, we are going to be improving the safety of pedestrians and vehicular traffic with the new location and slightly increased size of tenant names. So as you can see in the proposed package, the sign overall is six and a half feet tall. As I mentioned before, it is six inches, or excuse me, five inches taller than what would be allowed by right. The proposed signage is 29.9 square feet, a difference of 4.9 square feet from the 25 square foot sign approved in 2019. And it is going to be externally illuminated. It does not show illumination on this proposal. It was added in by Shannon, I believe, last time it was proposed as not illuminated, but the existing conduit is there for illumination. So that will be added after the fact, I believe, ground lighting. So I know that was a lot of information. If there are any questions anyone would like, I can absolutely answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. Let me turn it over to the commissioners. We'll see what questions are out there. Matt?
Can you just expand upon the illumination? I'm just, I just want to understand that better, if you could.
I'm sorry, you said expand upon the illumination?
Yes.
So as shown in the drawings, there is no illumination proposed for the sign. Shannon did update the materials to read as externally illuminated in the staff report. So again, there is no proposed illumination with the sign itself, but it will be externally illuminated after the fact by the client.
Okay. Yeah, that's it for me, Scott. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Bob?
No questions.
Roja?
No questions.
Liz?
Just to follow up on the illumination, is it going to, I don't know if you can answer this, hopefully you can, is it going to be ground mounted? Is it going to be gooseneck lighting, down lighting, or?
The podium.
The podium over here, sir.
Mr. Hayes, the podium, please. Thank you.
That's the part I'm kind of confused on.
So for the record, Richard Hayes, I'm one of the partners that own the property. That is the topic of this conversation this evening. And the idea behind this is it's going to be downlit, similar to what you see on the facades of the building today and the signage today with some LED lighting, strip lighting, but it'll be, but it's going to be at a 45-degree angle, and it sits, we have a balance that sits at least two inches below the strip. Okay? So that's what we're proposing. Where we end up, I guess you'll tell me before I leave this room. Any other questions?
Right now, I think I'm good. I might circle back. Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, I guess I would ask, was there any, noticing there's two of the people, two of the people renting space have very large, much larger than everybody else. Is there any consideration to making those a little bit smaller to reduce the height of the sign to come closer to the square footage allowed?
So those are, tenants are by square footage percentage much larger than any other tenant in the shopping center. To answer your question, you know, I think we've met you more than halfway here. I know this is obviously, you know, done by special exception, but if I was going to argue a variance, I have some very, as articulated earlier by Chrissy, we have some very good reasons. If it gets any smaller, I might as well go back to the one that was approved in 19, and candidly, we don't want to build that because it's not big enough. So this is compared to what's existing there today. It's 61% of what exists there today. So, you know, there's 76 square feet versus 46.5 square feet. If you do the math, I think it's about 61 or 62%. Now, that one sits below the road. This is going to sit on the road. I understand that. But it's 26 feet off the road, too. So you have to put that into consideration. So to answer your question, I appreciate the comment. I'm just not inclined to make that concession at this point.
Other questions?
Bruce? Thank you for making the changes that you did, especially the rendering. I think that was useful in helping to understand it. So I don't have any further questions.
Thank you very much.
I don't think I have any questions at this point either. Anybody else?
Just swing back to me. Just to follow up on what Commissioners St. Germain said. I understand that the existing sign is much bigger, but it is also in a different spot. I understand the need for it to be so much bigger because it is below grade and everything like that. I just, I guess, should I give my opinion, or should I hold off?
No, you can.
Okay. I think it's still awfully big, and it will be smack dab in everyone's face, which is exactly what you want, I understand, because you want everyone to come in. But I, I'm not loving it. I'll say that. So that's my opinion.
Can you maybe, I mean, we heard from Chrissy, thank you. Can you explain to us the hardship? Because that's really the crux of the matter, right? This is a hardship request.
Right. We're 26 feet off the curb line to the property line of that property. So essentially, this sign will sit less than 16 feet from the actual building to the end of the sign, the part of the sign that will be closest to the street or Farmington Avenue. So that's one hardship. So I have to set it back off that road 26 feet. So you want to talk about the sizing piece. I mean, this is essentially, you know, 46 square feet is like a sheet of plywood and another third. It's not that big. You're acting like it's a billboard or something, and that's not at all what we're intention. We tried our hardest to come up with something that we felt was, you know, reasonable, feasible, and plausible, a build that would still service the needs of all the tenants there. And yes, I have an additional tenant down there that wasn't there when we bought the shopping center. But that was, you know, done for consideration of the tenant that was already there. So the fact of the matter is, that's the first part. Obviously, you know, if you have driven through there when the lights are green, you know, traffic moves pretty quickly through there. You've got a curve. There's a lot of foliage on a property that we don't control. So when you come around, you're upon that entrance, like boom. I mean, you know, it's not even 100, maybe 60, or, well, don't quote me on that. I better make sure that I'm telling you what I think it really is. Not more than a couple hundred feet, though, I don't think, before you're actually.
What do you want the measurement from Mr. Hayes?
Well, from the property line of Mr. Ockelini, so.
From the intersection of 10 and 4?
No, from where his property line meets ours, 220 feet. So it's not that far. And when you're driving a car that's going, you know, let's just hypothetically say 35 miles an hour. I don't know how many people actually drive that speed there, but let's use that as a speed. You know, you're on top of that intersection before you know it, and we're just trying to get somebody to be able to see the sign. And the other aspect of this is when you're traveling in the opposite direction, and you're leaving town, and you're going up to the highway, you know, I have that bus stop there. Obviously, that's one impediment. I have some landscaping that I'm going to do some pruning to, which will hopefully lessen some of that. But at the same time, you know, that visibility coming over the bridge is also somewhat impaired as well. And I can't do anything about, if I could get rid of that bus stop shed, believe me, I would. It's, and I made a phone call about it, but I didn't get very far. So the state's pretty adamant that they're not going to move it. So anyway, and it's in there right away. So I don't control the property. So I hope I answered your question.
Anybody else? Matt, are you good?
I'm all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Anybody else share thoughts or ready to vote? Can we get a motion in a second?
Matt's not in the room.
Oh, thank you very much. I would like to make a motion that that we approve the sign application for Sign Pro for the property located at 838 Farmington Avenue.
As presented.
As presented, yes. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion passed?
Wait a minute.
Wait a second.
Was that?
What happened?
No.
No.
We had two minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Do it again.
I'm going to do a roll call. So got a motion and a second. So Matthew Bandle.
Aye.
Robert Canto.
Aye.
Roja Afshar.
Aye.
David St. Germain.
No.
Liz Sanford.
No.
And Scott Halston.
Aye.
Okay. Motion does not pass. It needed a five, six.
Sorry, David, I didn't hear you. All right. Moving on to our second item, Farmington CTA LLC Site Plan Approval for Battery Storage Systems.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Greg Carey. I'm a project manager with RWE Clean Energy. With me this evening is Gareth Wilson, civil engineer from BL Companies. BL is located in Meriden and in Hartford. Online joining us is David Rains, Director of Fire Safety for RWE, Zach Poston. Zach works with me on the battery storage projects in Connecticut. He's located in Danbury, and Jeremy Smith from Waldron Engineering. Jeremy is our electrical engineer. So we've put together a brief presentation. I'd just like to highlight a few things if I could. RWE is a large, national renewable energy company. We develop wind battery storage and solar projects across the country. We're located in Valhalla, New York. Our local office, as I mentioned, is in Danbury. This battery storage unit at Farmington Sports Arena is being developed in conjunction with the Connecticut Green Bank through their Energy Storage Solutions Program. There were really two main purposes behind the battery storage unit. One is it will be connected to the property's electric meter. So we'll be tied into the building's electric meter that's called Behind the Meter in the Energy Storage Solutions Program. The property owner will have the option of using the battery as backup power in the event of an outage. But more importantly, this battery is going to provide power to the grid. It will dispatch and it will charge and dispatch energy to and from the grid. So in the event that there is a peak demand period, oftentimes in the summer, when it's 90 degrees, three, four, five days in a row, every source will be able to basically use the power from this battery as a means of providing power to customers in the community. The battery is going to be remotely monitored on a 24/7 day basis. It can be remotely shut down, and the town will be provided with an emergency management plan and fire safety plan prior to the installation of any equipment on site. The system is going to be just less than 1 megawatt in size. Right now, we're planning on using a Tesla Megapack. That could change depending on availability, supply chain issues, and other things. We've provided a couple of illustrations of what a battery unit looks like in the presentation. I'll ask Gareth after David's done with his presentation on the fire safety features, I'll, excuse me, I'll ask Gareth to talk about the site plan and answer any questions. But, excuse me, David, are you there?
I am. Can you folks hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. David Rains, Director of Fire Safety for RWE Clean Energy. Go ahead, David.
Hey, good evening, folks. Thanks for your time on this. So my role is really just to talk about the fire safe design, answer any questions the commission has. My background is fire protection engineering. I'm also in the fire service, been a fire chief for about the last 15 years, and the chief of special operations in Putnam County, New York. So I'm in charge of the hazmat team. So this, as Greg talked a little bit about, this is a single container. Right now, we're looking at the Tesla. It's designed and tested to the highest standards that exist. So regardless of whether we're building it in Connecticut or we're building it in Texas or another state, we build all our systems to the highest standards, which is the National Fire Protection Standard of 855, the International Fire Code, Chapter 12. These systems are tested to UL standards, 9540, 9540A. I know that might not mean much to you folks, but those are the international standards that exist now for battery storage. What's great about the Tesla is it has this very unique battery management system. So the battery management system is the brain. So what the brain does, it looks at about 14 different points within the battery system to look at temperature, humidity, power coming in, power going out, the differential across a cell or across a series of cells. So if there's any anomalies, what happens is it shuts down, opens up the circuits, and makes it safe. This, as you can tell from the rendering, the batteries are all accessible from outside. This is not a walk-in unit. Anytime it's serviced, the OEM technicians would come out, do their lockout, tag out, they open the doors, and the batteries are right in front of them. So you can replace batteries, maintain batteries. They're on racks. You slide a rack out, you slide a new set of batteries in. There's active ventilation in this container. So if there's ever a thermal reaction where the battery heats up and off gases, it will eliminate that gas through the top of the container. It's designed to eliminate gas buildup in the unlikely event that there's a thermal reaction within the batteries. Outside of that, this is a fenced-in enclosure, not accessible to the public. We do provide a fire department access. We provide what they call a NOX box system, which I've talked to the chiefs about, which your community does participate in. So the lock on this gate will be specific to Farmington Fire Department's locks. We provide training prior to construction starting, and then walkthroughs for the fire department, the fire marshal, make sure everybody's comfortable with it, it's comfortable on the access. And we provide a site-specific emergency response plan. And that we develop in conjunction with the chiefs, the deputy chiefs, et cetera, and then we run them through that. And on a routine basis, we look at the SRP, the Emergency Services Response Plan, to make sure that any new personnel in the fire department or fire marshal's office have been updated on it. That will sit in the NOX box. We also provide it digitally. In that NOX box is all emergency contact information, any SDSs for any materials included in the battery system. And then we have the ongoing training, like I said, as time goes on, because we know the personnel changes and whatnot. I know I said a lot. Any questions specific to the safety pieces that you might be interested in?
We'll sort of hold off, I think, on questions until the end of the presentation. But thank you very much.
Okay. Greg, back to you.
Thank you. Shannon, if you're able to go to page six of the plan set. The overall aerial. Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Gareth Wilson. I'm project manager at BL Companies, 100 Constitution Plaza, Hartford. I'm here tonight to talk about the civilian general aspects of this proposed best battery unit. So here we have the sports arena building to the north, northwest, plays sports fields to the right. Shannon, are you able to zoom in on the left-hand side of the building just to show? Little area. Thank you so much. So this comprises of four separate units, the best battery unit itself, which there was a visual previously on the screen. Beside that is a AUX rack beside it, inside the same enclosure. To the south of that, we have the switchgear and another pad, an enclosure, and then to the south of that, another replacement transformer, which will place the existing transformer for the building. As you can see, there's substantial tree growth along the front of the building there. We are adding some additional screening to the switchgear and the transformer at the front. And if you're able to move to the next page, Shannon, page seven. We can go into more detail here. So could you zoom in on the best unit at the north, so we can show a bit more detail? Perfect. So the best unit itself sits on a concrete pad, just slightly larger than the unit itself. So it's 30 feet long, approximately six and a half feet deep. The AUX is on a smaller pad right beside it. It has two electric feeds coming to it underground and travel down to the switchgear, which controls where the electric comes and goes. This enclosure is surrounded by a seven-foot chin-length fence for security. That's the standard set by the authority. It has a small retaining wall to the north of that, two and a half, 2.6 feet high modular block with the wall behind that. And then we have the gravel pad of inside the enclosure and the gravel access drive to the property line. And then we have a terminal paving to the curb line itself for access and maintenance. Maintenance itself requires such a large pad for a forklift to come in and able to remove the battery units if they need to be taken away for actual maintenance replacement. Shannon, if you're able to move slightly south, show the switchgear. Unfortunately, this doesn't show all the trees lying along the front, but you can see the switchgear here is in another concrete pad, gravel surround, in an enclosure, again, chin-length fence with a row of shrubs are provided along the front there. And then to the south of that is the transformer with the four trees that we're proposing. We are taking away four trees to the north where the best unit is. So they're the replacement. And then we have the electric connection to the existing point of connection to the building there to the right. And then the curve off to the road is the incoming electric supply, which we're taking up and taking to the transformer and into the switchgear, best battery unit. If you're able to go to, actually, page nine. Sediment erosion control. So as a civilian general project, it's relatively straightforward, four pads, two enclosures, our standard sediment erosion control measures. We've got the silt fence around the perimeter of the works. We've got the track pads, both north and south, gravel to the north, fog system to the south for all vehicles coming through, and then filter socks along the parking lot where we're coming along the terminal service there. That's it, really, engineering-wise. Happy to take any questions or colleagues on the actual proposal itself. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. You guys are all set. Just wanted to double check. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. We'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions. Matt, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Just, I guess, I'm not sure who this was before, possibly David. I was hoping you can express or talk about the systems, the alarm systems, and how that relates to coolant leaks. I know some of these Megapacks have thermal runaway capabilities, which is concerning.
Sure. So with, there's a couple of questions here, so I'll address them one at a time. So let's talk about the thermal, the thermal management system. So Tesla has a unique system, closed-loop system to manage the temperature of the battery modules, to minimize any potential of the batteries having a thermal excursion and getting to that thermal runaway condition. to minimize any potential of the batteries having a thermal excursion and getting to that thermal runaway condition. It's a closed-loop system. It's ethylene glycol. It's a Valvoline product. It's the, it's, it's the clean, the clean antifreeze, if you want to call it that. It's also got a containment system. So if there's any failures in the jacketing, which we've never experienced, but if there are, it's got a containment system where it contains them all within the box. So you don't have any, any potential for it to get outside the box. Now, as far as the monitoring, so we carefully monitor, so what they call SCADA, which is the acronym for our system that monitors twenty-four seven, back to the Austin, our, the Austin Control Center, I'm sorry. And we also are going to have a, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, we're going to be a remote fire alarm panel on this or there is not? Is Jeremy on with us?
Yes, there will be. Yeah, there'll be a remote fire alarm panel with a multi-spectrum IR camera pointed at the front of the unit. In case any of those thermal systems in the extremely unlikely event they were to fail, this exterior system would then alarm, shutting down the system and summoning authorities.
Jeremy, I apologize. Jeremy's our, Jeremy's our electrical engineer here on this project and several others. Jeremy, do you want to expand on any of the other safeties on the, on the preventative systems?
No, I think you did real great. David, just as Walter is a Tesla partner, we do also want to bring out in the also unlikely event that there are any buildup of combustible gases. The system has what's called a sparker, which is an active ventilation system, which would release those gases, causing them to spark slightly, which removes them and prevents any buildup of gases that could lead to any of the unfortunate circumstances that happened with the older models that aren't in use anymore.
So this, this Tesla two XL system is is quite advanced from what we've seen, you know, in the news, et cetera, from the two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen systems. Quite a few advancements. We've never had a failure. We've had them shut down because there's been an anomaly. The settings are so tight. If there's any temperature anomaly on the system, it, it shuts down, it opens up, sends the alarms and and, and then it responded to appropriately. And it ends up in a very static condition, no power in, no power out.
Okay.
Did I help at all with that?
Yeah, I really appreciate the information. Thank you, Scott.
All right, Bob. What's the purpose?
As I said, there, there are really two purposes. Well, one is the Connecticut Grain Bank is, has a program to encourage battery storage deployment development. And really it gives, the, the greatest purpose is it gives the grid stability. It gives, in this case, Eversource the ability to get power when they need it on short-term notice. And it eliminates the need right now. What happens in the event of a peak demand period is Eversource will likely trigger a peaker plant, basically a power plant to come on to meet the excess demand. And those, those peaker plants are old, inefficient and, and run by fossil fuel. So this gives Eversource some flexibility in terms of quick response, clean power that's already available and will reduce the need for drawing power from those peaker plants. So it's, it's one of the, the many items in the state's goal. Become carbon neutral by twenty forty. This is just one program.
Gotcha. What's the battery life?
Excuse me?
Battery life?
The battery life, Jeremy, I'll let you answer that question.
Excellent. Yeah. We have ten years of guaranteed performance and twenty years of projected import performance. So you can look for this to be their considerable amount of time.
And then what happens with the batteries? Are they considered hazardous material?
Jeremy, you're, you're the expert.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm pleased to say that our partner Tesla has free recycling. So the designated return facilities for units that we purchase to install in Connecticut, if we go forward with Tesla, is in the Austin, Texas area. So the batteries at the end of their lifespan are designated to return there. They will return to the marketplace as new batteries in the future.
So the, the Eversource is basically the entity that will use that storage facility?
Yes. Yeah, we're tied into the grid. In this case, Eversource would be the, the utility.
And how long is it going to take the construction it's going to take?
I would estimate that a unit this size will probably take, call it three to four months to install.
Thanks. No question. Further question?
Thanks for your presentation. I do have to claim a little bit of ignorance. Is this, this means that the power coming from Eversource, they'll go and store it in, in these batteries? And then it's sitting there waiting for a need? Okay.
That's exactly.
I wasn't sure if it was, it had anything to do with solar or?
No, independent of solar. This is another source of, of energy, of power when it's needed.
Okay, so when things are clipping along, stored away and then when problem comes?
That's right.
Okay.
Dispatched to the group.
The light dawns.
Basically what I was trying to say.
That, right. It's like, I don't quite get it. So, okay, okay, that's, that, that's, that's great. And so the Green Bank, the Connecticut Green Bank is just looking to find more areas for this sort of setup?
Yes.
And that's the program.
And as, as demand for power increases, this is just another source available.
Okay. And how about, you probably don't know, but if they put in, say, electric charging stations for cars, would that best system get involved or would?
No, probably not. It would be independent.
So, okay. Thank you very much.
Dave?
So these are really close to a building? Is that right?
The setback, I, I think is the requirement, Jeremy, again, correct me if I'm wrong, the Tesla requirement is no closer than ten feet to a structure?
That's correct.
And so the actual distance is thirty feet, just above, a little over thirty.
Oh, thirty. Okay.
Twenty-five?
That's very close. Is there any training provided for fire departments in dealing with this if something really big happens? Like, how, how does that work?
Yes. David, I'll, I'll let you.
You got, it's a great question. I touched on it before. So we've already started working with the fire department on what they call the site-specific emergency services response plan. And that has all the specific information to the position, location, size, accessibility of this unit, preferred firefighting methods, checklist as to what, what's needed. And we provide that training. And then, like I said, we provide ongoing training as personnel changes or the chief or the captain or the deputy chief says, hey, we got a new crew, we got a new captain, et cetera. And we update that ESRP through the fire marshal's office. And we ensure that both the fire marshal and the fire chief have both electronic and paper access to that emergency services response plan. With that plan, we provide training on how to deal with the Tesla-specific battery. All the nuances, what to expect, what they've seen historically, what the testing has shown. So we're, we, we stay in it, you know, for the long haul. The test, the training will start before the batteries arrive. So if God forbid, there's an issue during, during construction, everybody's been briefed and trained on, on what's there and what to expect.
And proximity to entrances, exits of the building?
It's, it's at the rear of the building.
At the rear.
Yeah.
Very good.
So no one will be back there trying to get in.
All right. Very good. No further questions. Bruce?
My fellow commissioners have asked most of my questions. The only thing I would, would want to add here is there are a number of notes from, from staff here in the, in the agenda review, especially related to, you know, making some corrections on the plan with respect, you know, for the CRC one, evergreen screening, things like that. Are, have you accepted all of these things in conjunction with the, the group?
We really haven't had a discussion with, with Shannon yet about them for the most.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I've been basing with Shannon there. We have briefly discussed it with Shannon. Moving the best unit forward two feet is something that we think is we're able to do, but there's an unknown set of unknown utilities that we want to avoid being inside the enclosure, hence why we positioned that location. Moving it further behind the building really is, we originally wanted the, the best unit out in front, closer to the point of connection. Further away from the point of connection, the efficiencies diminish. So Jeremy can, can talk about more than that if you want more details. We are approximately one hundred and twenty-five feet from the curb line. And it's actually fairly well screened. I measured the angle between the existing vegetation. We're talking about twenty-two, twenty-three degrees angle from the road as exposed and seen. And that's only the very left-hand front corner of the chain link fence is visible. So from a aesthetics point of view, it's really hidden as it is. Moving it further is only going to be detrimental to the program itself. And we have played around, I think this is third or fourth location that we have played with. And we've got it to work. The other comments about this screening requested more vegetation planting, I believe, and a change from our bodies to something else as well, more pretty. That stuff that we're very much willing to do. What else have I forgotten?
Check in with the CT water?
CT water. So we have applied to them and we're waiting to hear back. So as a risk to the aquifer protection itself, and Jeremy touched on it briefly, that there are no real liquids in there that can seep in the ground. So we're not looking at a large hazardous liquid waste that could detriment to that.
I, I would just ask Jeremy, can you just expand on the impact of moving the best further away? To the impact to the operation of the battery?
Yes, the, the unit is a four hundred and eighty volt unit. And we are in this installation a considerable distance away from our utility reference. We are reaching the point, you know, where I would have significant concerns. So if this unit currently placed thirty feet away from a structure and a hundred feet away from the public thoroughfare, that, that feels to me like it's, it's pretty tucked back. And yeah, I, I would have serious concerns if we were to move it any further away unless I reposition other, other parts of the project, which are just going to defeat the purpose of having it tucked in the back corner like this. So I would, I would request that you keep it in the position, one hundred and twenty feet from public thoroughfare is really good and thirty feet from a building is wonderful.
Okay, nothing further from me at this point.
So I want to stay with the location topic for a second. Maybe Shannon, you can help understand because it seems like it's not a visibility thing. It's more about property lines. That's the concern there, less than visibility to the street or any other.
Correct. It's the, that side property line.
So does that change anything for you guys in terms of?
We're currently at eighteen feet away. I believe the regulations are twenty. We have a series of utilities behind the building, some unknown due to per record keeping. We haven't been able to identify what they are to avoid trapping them inside the enclosure. We put the closure right up against it and we have our standard distances that we have to, there's nine feet from the, the gate to the best unit and the separation to the rear. So without more substantial change required on site, removing utilities disruption there. We're, we're kind of in a pinch point. We also have the turning radius for the, the forklift truck there, which we, we think we're able to, to fit with two feet less. But again, it's, it's all about compromising this location. It's sort of the last preferred location, but one we ended up with. So really, if it's about the property line itself, eighteen feet rather than twenty, it's a, there's a decent amount of more effort required to try and figure out those utilities and then alter them so we're not enclosing them. So that's, that's where we're at today.
Okay. Shannon, does that, like, is that something that the town would work with them on? Or do you need us to? I'm trying to understand our role in that, I guess.
We need to wait to hear from CT water.
Yeah.
So, and I'd like to actually, I'm going to divert from that question because I think there's more information. I'd like to hear about the ethylene glycol system, the cooling system that's used and how that's contained, because I believe the preliminary information we had that we shared with Connecticut DEP hadn't made any reference to a, the cooling system. So as part of that, I think that would give us some time to work and better understand what other options are because so this application came in, I want to say, just over a week ago. Ish.
Yeah.
The Monday, et cetera. So this hasn't, this version hasn't been, we've seen, seen preliminary ones, but this version with staff has not been in for very long.
Okay.
So I think additional conversations need to take place. Is where, is my best answer.
Okay. But you're okay voting, us voting out tonight? No. Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand.
I'd suggest, so get, and I suggested to the applicant is, and make the presentation.
Okay.
And get some of this information out, introduce the applicant, ask questions. And then I, I my suggestion would be
Yep. That makes sense.
That we can get additional information.
Thanks, Shannon. Appreciate that. I do have a couple of other quick questions before we do that and maybe other commissioners do. Is snow a concern? Like coming off the roof of the building into the battery unit into that enclosure, whatever? I don't know.
From the building, we are twenty-six, twenty-seven feet away from the actual base unit itself.
Okay.
So not so much from that. I have to rely on David or Jeremy to talk about the itself.
Yep.
So as part, as part of the O N M, besides, you know, weed management and, and, you know, fence management, we'll, we'll provide snow removal to ensure there's, there's twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five access secondary tandy snow event. Which is very typical with these. We want to make sure they're, you know, their access is maintained to all the key equipment. I, you know, looking at the parking lot when I did my site visit, doesn't look like it's going to be an issue. We're going to work with the, the property owner to ensure that, you know, the snow isn't, isn't piled up in front of it, limiting access by the fire department or, or the O N M group that would be maintaining this. I don't, I don't see that as a, as a concern. This is a pretty small enclosure.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is any need or consideration of bollards?
We did consider and we're doing seven sites throughout Connecticut at the moment, all of them much closer to roads and dry aisles than this. We're not, closest item is the transformer. It's ten feet away from the existing curb line. As per Eversource requirements, that's sufficient. That's where they like it. The best unit itself, the only vehicle going behind there will be for the maintenance of the best unit itself. So they should be careful. Plus, there's a few AC units behind there as well. So the fence line should protect from any slow-moving traffic. Don't see that being a problem.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any additional questions that came up?
Yeah, why here? Why near kids where? Why, why this, why this, why this location? Yeah.
Because this, and Jeremy, jump in if, if I don't get this completely right, but in surveying the Eversource areas, the grid, this was one area where there was a specific need, not, not this particular property, but this, this area for battery storage and, and could support this operation. So we're in other communities as well. And basically we've tried to target where there is the greatest need from the grid standpoint. from the grid standpoint.
And uh, we talked a little bit about maintenance, but whose responsibility is it maintaining all around?
It, it is ours. It's the, the developer.
I'm good.
Good. Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
So it sounds like we need a motion and a second to continue.
Make a motion that we continue the site plan approval from Farmington CTA LLC for battery storage system with associated utility connections at eleven Executive Drive.
We need a date for that, Shannon.
Eleven thirteen.
Eleven thirteen.
Uh, for eleven thirteen twenty-four.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have one application to accept from Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission. Can we get a motion in a second for that, please?
I move we accept the application from the Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the zoning regulations revising Article Two, Section Eight RDM and Article Four, Section Eight B Three. Schedule of off-street parking in the RDM zone and schedule public hearing for this on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
All those in favor? I opposed. Motion passes. All right. We are on to our public hearings, just a little bit of process explanation before we jump in. For folks in the audience and maybe online, so the applicant for each of these will present to the commission. Just as you've seen, commissioners will then ask questions of the applicant. At that point, we'll open things up for public comment. We'll start in the room, we'll go, Shannon will help us with anybody who might be online. We ask that you try to keep comments limited to five minutes. It's really just an effort to respect everybody's um, time tonight, the commission and the publics. And coming up and saying, I echo what others said, um, is, is just fine. As far as the commission's concerned. So we appreciate everybody being here. It's been a while since we've had a little bit of a crowd, so thank you for coming tonight. And with that being said, we're gonna jump right into the first one, which is I guess we're gonna find out how we pronounce it, Michael Tastinelli. Application for special permit for home business internet sales at thirty-two Junior Road.
How you doing, Mike Tastinelli?
It's feeling good now, Michael. Thank you.
So uh, I work full-time. I'm starting a part-time business out of my house. It's gonna be online sales. And with that being said, nothing's gonna be shipped to the house. I know that was a big concern of everyone's. So no trucks, no, no deliveries. Um, somebody is gonna contact me if they buy something, I will then drop ship it to them, make a couple bucks in the process. The other thing is, um, since last year, nobody can, no, uh, private people can no longer do handgun and rifle transfers. It has to be done through an FFL. There is only one home-based FFL in Farmington, so I see a great business opportunity. That's basically the extent of it. Guys, got any questions?
Okay, thank you. Matt, any questions?
So this is a firearms business?
Uh, it's gonna be a sales business. I mean, I could sell like hunting clothes. I will be doing handgun transfers and rifle transfers. As far as selling, I'm not gonna be able to sell in the town of Farmington according to, uh, to what I read, so.
Okay, no questions. Thanks.
All right, um, so let's start with the obvious, the transfers. How are you gonna work that?
Okay, so the ATF requires that I keep documents for twenty-five years. Somebody comes with a gun that they need transferred to the other person, I would take it in, put it on my books. From there, it's documented. Then I have to call the Department of Public Safety and I will have to transfer it to the person that it's going to. With that, there's a fee associated and that's the money that I'll be making. I'll keep all the documents in a filing cabinet that's locked, fire protected and all that. That's my responsibility just for the ATF.
All right. You said there's gonna be nobody coming to the house. How are you gonna do a transfer if they don't come to the house?
For, they, they'll come to the house for the service, like for a transfer. They're, they're not coming to the house to pick up something that they bought. If they buy like a, a hunting vest or something, I could just have it drop shipped to their house. Therefore, there, there's not gonna be any increased traffic volume to my house. And then the only time that I'll be able to do transfers is after my full-time job. So as I noted, it's gonna be from four thirty PM to seven PM.
Okay, so the only traffic you're expecting is when you're doing transfers, firearm transfer paperwork for one person to another.
Yep, that's correct.
So they're bringing the gun in, you're doing the paperwork.
And they take the gun with them.
Then they're taking the gun. Yeah, I'm very familiar with the process. I'm just trying to figure out how you're working this. So everything else is gonna be drop shipped. You're basically gonna be the middleman, make fifty cents on each product. Order it from the company and ship it straight to their house. You're not gonna have any inventory or anything like that.
Nope, no size.
UPS, no, nothing coming to the house, cause you don't have any storage.
Exactly.
That's what I figured. Okay.
You're sure you guys saw the size of my house, so.
All right, so really the only time you're gonna have people coming to the house is for the, the sale transfer paperwork.
Yes, exactly.
Lasts about an hour roughly.
Yes.
Have you checked in with state police to see if you're gonna be able to get through to them at seven o'clock at night?
Yes, absolutely. That's when they close.
Okay, all right. And I'm assuming you're already a licensed FFL in the state?
I'm in the process of it. I have to get zoned for it first, so here I am.
Okay, so once we get the approval through here, that's when you go through them for the FFL.
Yes, yep.
Gotcha, okay. All right, I'll um, I'll hold off on everything else. Okay.
Thanks, no questions for me. My uh, my friend does the same thing, so if he gets approved, good luck to you.
All right, thank you.
This is a different part of things that I'm not that familiar with. What is the acronym, what's FFL stand for?
It means a federally firearm license.
Okay, okay. So it's just the proper licensing process and everything. Okay. Other questions have been answered. Thank you.
Welcome.
Dave?
I don't have any questions right now.
Bruce? So just to clarify, you're not doing any assembly or smithing uh, onsite in, in your?
I'm not gonna be equipped to, to do any gunsmithing, so it's just gonna be transfers. And like I said, it's just part-time. I wouldn't have the time to get into gunsmithing.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Any idea of the traffic you would expect from?
It's just gonna be word of mouth. I'm not gonna advertise, so I'm really expecting maybe one to two people a week.
Yeah, okay. And then, and you have plenty of parking, like for an additional car?
Yeah, I have a really long driveway, so.
All right, I think that's all the questions I had as well. So um, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for or against the application, please step up to the podium. Shannon, do we want to go online?
Okay, if anyone has called in online for the application for Michael Tastinelli at thirty-two Junior Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in online to offer any comments or questions regarding the application at thirty-two Junior Road, please raise your hand, Mr. Chair. There is one hand raised.
Okay, thank you.
Jacqueline, you should be able to unmute your microphone. We'll need your full name and address.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead. It's Jacqueline Danny, thirty-eight Junior Road.
Okay.
This gun issue is very concerning to me. He's really, uh, you know, he's using this word transfer. He is really not being clear about exactly what that means. Are guns coming in or going out of this house?
Yes, if somebody sells a firearm, they have to bring it to an FFL, a federally firearm license individual and then from there it gets transferred to whoever they sold it to. So the fire is not gonna be at them.
So the gun is gonna be, the gun is gonna be at the house, coming and going from the house?
Yes, for about an hour, as, as long as it takes to do the transfer.
Well, this is a, let me explain about this street. It's a tiny little street. It's only like twenty houses on the whole street. It's a dead end with no throughway. It's narrow. There's not even a yellow line on the street. And people coming and going, they're gonna have to be turning around in driveways and parking on the street. And any delivery trucks or whatever, it's very loud, it's very disruptive. And this is a residential area, not a business area. It's, it's a quiet street. I've lived here almost sixty years. And somebody wants to come in and start running guns? In our little street? Very disturbing.
Thank, thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Would you like to respond?
Yeah, um, ma'am, I don't know if you read the, the actual business description.
Yes, I did, and it said nothing about guns.
Nelly, this is gonna work best if you address your response back to the commission for their information to expand, expand on, maybe really pinpoint how this happens, because there's many of us that aren't, perhaps many of us that are not familiar with this process. So perhaps break it down a little further, but it'll work best if you address the commission.
So to further go on the, the business aspect, there's not gonna be any UPS trucks. I mean, there's, I live on Junior Road, obviously. So Amazon's up and down the road all day and it's not gonna be because of my business. I can guarantee you that. If a police officer wants to transfer a firearm to another police officer, they can be facility, facilitated through me. They will not be parking on the street. My driveway is plenty long enough. They'll come in my driveway. Both vehicles could park there. They will bring the firearm in my house. I will do the transfer. Then the firearm will leave the house. There's not gonna be any increase in traffic volume. There's not gonna be any noise that's gonna be concerning and guns won't be staying overnight for say.
Thank you for explaining it further. And is there anybody else, Shannon?
So if anyone else has called in with other comments or questions regarding this application at thirty-two Junior Road, you can raise your hand to address the commission. At this time, there are no other hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions for the applicant?
One more slight clarification?
Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that description. Um, so in essence, you are the, as you said, I like the word facilitated. That's very helpful. And so a, a gun comes in, you see it, acknowledge, write down, record paperwork, all that. The gun leaves.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so at most, there'll be two cars in your driveway.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not gonna be six or eight or anything like that?
No on-road parking.
Okay.
No delivery trucks.
Nothing like that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? One last check, Bob? Yeah, I'm just I commend you for getting into it. It's a difficult business. You're opening yourself up to a lot of scrutiny, as you can tell. You know, just for clarification for people that may not know, you're opening yourself up to the ATF going into your house at any time. To verify your books are available and all that. So you are opening yourself up to a different level and standard. So I, I applaud you for getting into such a difficult business.
Thank you.
But why?
Well, because it's, it's very difficult to find somebody that could do these transfers now. Before June sixth of last year, it was very easy. You know, Buddy could transfer a firearm to their friend. At the kitchen table, you, you just call, do it and that's it. See you bye. Now it has to be done through an FFL and that's where the difficulty comes in, but I see an opportunity and it's something I really wanna pursue.
Okay. As far as the other retail aspect, Doug, what are you gonna be targeting? Are you gonna have like a website? How's that gonna work?
Probably gonna be web-based. Um, I'm still setting up some wholesale accounts through like Midway USA, Brownells. From there, like if somebody wants to buy, let's say, a, a new rifle stock, you know, I could get my discount on it, purchase it, have it shipped to whoever purchased it.
And make your two dollars or?
Yeah, two dollars, yep.
I follow you now. Okay, all right. Best of luck to you.
All right, thank you.
All right, one more check, questions? Good? We okay closing the public hearing at this point? Okay, now closing the public hearing. Any discussion?
Questions have been answered, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for answering all the questions. So let's get a motion in a second, please.
Because we might, might wanna consider specifying hours, since you specify them.
I think it's in the application.
Yeah, four thirty to seven PM.
Okay. That's great. Let me do it. You wanna do it?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, my turn. Excuse me, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application of Michael J. Tastinelli for a special permit for home business internet sales located at thirty-two Junior Road in an R twelve zone.
Sandy, you'll figure that out. All, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
All right, applicant, uh, public hearing number two, Alexander Farah and Holly Benson. Application for special permit for expanded home in excess of thirty-two hundred square feet at one eleven Wood Pond.
Hey, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. So my name's Alexander Farah. I'm the homeowner of one-one-one Wood Pond Road. I own it with my girlfriend, Holly Benson. I apologize, she couldn't be here. She works late on Mondays. So I'll kinda take you through our project, current state and future state, what we're looking for. So Shannon, if you don't mind when you get a chance, pulling up the first floor plans of the, of the prints.
I'm just gonna get us over to the right area.
Yeah, no rush.
That would be helpful.
She knows we're gonna ask.
I know my audience.
Trying to get ahead of us there.
To a certain extent. There you go, there's your first floor plan.
Thank you. So my current home is a ranch house. It's a one-level house with a full attic. When I say full, it spans over the whole, whole space of the house. So it's currently about fourteen hundred square feet, including where that family room is. Now, there is a um, two-car garage. So my proposal that we plan on doing is, so for the first floor, we are going to convert the two-car garage where that family room is to a living space. So we're going from on the first floor, about fifteen hundred square feet up to nineteen hundred and twenty-four square feet on the first floor. With that, that's not pictured on the plans. There's also a detached garage that's existing. Our plan is to keep that. So there's a six hundred and twenty-four square foot detached garage in the, in the rear, rear of our property in the backyard. So for the first floor, the only changes to square feet would be that family room converting into a, I'm sorry, the garage converting into a family room. And then the larger part of this proposal is my plans are to add a full second story on the house. So like I mentioned, it does have a full walk-up attic, but in this plan, we want to make it a true second-floor living space. And the most important thing to note here is that we are not expanding footprint out. We're only going up on the existing foundation. Um, so we did have a structural engineer come in and certify that the existing foundation is indeed strong enough um, to support a full second story of the house. So the second floor will be just a duplicate of the, of the first floor. So we're an additional nineteen hundred and twenty-four, twenty-four square feet. So that leaves it at about thirty-eight, thirty-nine hundred square feet of living space. Um, and again, with that existing detached garage staying in the backyard as it sits. So again, the important thing is I'm not expanding. We're staying on the existing foundation. The Health District has approved already that my lot size does fit. It is on septic, so the Health District, Patty already proved that um, the lot sizes is able to support a larger tank or system if needed. So, so no problems there, but overall, that's the um, that's the whole scope of the project. There's the exterior view that Shannon just pulled up, so I don't know if you have pictures of the current state, but it's basically just the, the first level there and then we're building a true second story. So nothing go, going out on the sides, just additional going up. I, I like to call it modest um, design on the front, so nothing too substantial um, for the neighborhood, but that's the um, that's the gist of it. So happy to answer any questions the, the board may have here.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Uh, Matt, any questions?
Uh, no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Uh-huh, all right, Liz?
Just checking in, cause you're gonna add two bathrooms upstairs, did I see?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so and the Health Department, that's all acceptable and, and they say you can handle it?
Yep, exactly. Yeah, Patricia, the only change she had Yep, exactly. Yeah, Patricia, the only change she had was there's in that office there, we had to make that opening five feet, so it didn't count as a bedroom. Um, so, so it's not private. So besides that, Patricia was fine with everything.
Okay, and I don't know what your future plans are, but there's, you can have a lot of kids in that room.
I know, that's, oh, my girlfriend, our, our plan is we're here to stay, so hopefully build a family. But one of the other reasons is she's moving from Massachusetts. So part of the deal was I have to support her family in the house someday, so.
Uh, okay. Uh, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave?
Um, just, um, looking at the other areas, square, the square footage of the houses nearby.
Yep.
That just seems, it seems like a, a big, big difference.
Yeah, so I saw that. So I know Shannon noted the adjacent houses to me. Um, one thing though, that the majority of those are two stories. Um, and then kinda spanning outside, just the adjacent properties, um, on Wood Pond Road, there are very large houses. Um, I do have a couple noted here, um, just for reference. I know ninety-one Wood Pond Road is forty-seven hundred square feet of living space with an additional five hundred and forty, uh, square foot garage, like a hundred and twenty Wood Pond Road is thirty-four hundred square feet with a six hundred and twenty square foot garage. Um, lastly, another note is just eighty-eight is fifty-three hundred square feet with a one thousand square foot garage. So although the adjacent houses are smaller, some of them are two stories, the, the street, um, it's not, it's not abnormal to see a house this size on, on the street and neighborhood. I do have wonderful neighbors here that are the adjacent neighbors, so thank you for coming.
I'm Bruce. Sort of continuing on with what Commissioner St. Germain was talking, I mean, you're, you're putting a real monster in, uh, on that street. It would be the biggest house by far, and you're, you're not, you're not exceeding the R twenty zone limit by a little. You're exceeding it by an awful lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, why does it need to be that big? I mean, we were joking about families and stuff, but why do you have to have a house that large?
Yeah, just one note, I know your comment was it will be the largest house by far on the street. That's unfortunately not true. It's, it's one, it'll be, it will fit in pretty well. Um, and we can pull up specifics of other houses with similar and greater size, but it will not be the, the largest house on the street. Um, in the neighborhood especially, there are some quite large houses, especially on the, on the waterfront, um, that expands again over five thousand square feet and, um, others similar. But I mean, the reasons why I wanted, I mean, in all seriousness, that my, my plan is, it's not a, this is my first time house with my girlfriend. It's not our plan to live here for a few months and leave. We are gonna stay here for the forever home and, and growing a family here is important to us. And it's for us, now's the time to do it before we do have that family. So it is important to, um, have that size and availability to grow that family in the future.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I know you referenced it, but neighbors, you've talked to the neighbors?
We have, yep, yeah, so, um.
It sounds like we might hear from some in a couple minutes too.
Yeah.
Just curious what those conversations were like.
Yeah, so all positive things. I can let them speak to it. I don't wanna assume they're here to support, but I mean, I, I have been very upfront with all the neighbors, especially adjacent neighbors. What our plans were when we bought the house, so everybody should be aware. I know we sent out the letters to, um, all neighbors as well. I'm not sure, Shannon, if you've got any, um, inquiries from, from others, but um, no oppositions. Like I said, our plans here, although they do seem substantial, we are just staying on the current footprint. We're not going out closer to anybody's yards. Um, overall, the house might increase by eight feet tall, but nothing, nothing out of the ordinary for the neighborhood. Again, the majority of houses are two stories, so, um, it does fit in quite well.
And is there a reason why here as opposed to like relocating in town somewhere to a larger home?
No, I mean, this, I don't wanna, in my opinion, this is one of the nicest neighborhoods I could ask for. I mean, it's, it's neighbor, it's neighbor we wanted, and we bought the house for a reason, and, um, this was our plan.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions? All right, thanks. We're gonna open it, open it up for public comment now. If there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for or against this application. Please come up to the podium. Mad Rush for the podium. Looks like he got appointed.
Yeah, I got a point. I'm Bill Nigren. I live at one oh seven, which is right next door to this house. Um, initially, my only concern was I had heard that there would, might be cantilevering of the second level. And so I was concerned about whether or not the cantilever would be on the side and encroach on whatever side set off there was. Um, Alexander explained to me when I got here that any cantilevering would only be on the front and the back, not on the side. So I figured, okay, there's no encroachment there. If you guys raised the square footage size issue, you know, if, if that's true, that it exceeds some zoning R twenty require, or, or standard, you know, that's kind of up to you to, to do. I mean, there are Colonials in the neighborhood, and this is no different from a Colonial, so you know, I feel like I can't really object to, you know, it's not going up three, four stories.
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
So that's my.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. Anybody else in the room? Come up to the microphone, please. So otherwise people online can't hear.
My name is Jan Larkin, and I live at one twelve, which is directly across the street.
Yep.
And I didn't know with cantilevering, so is it gonna take up more square footage? Is there gonna be more impervious surface?
Uh, so I can talk through it here. Um, I'll be going to the mic so they can hear.
Yeah.
So on.
Right places.
The cantilever, so the way it's pictured there, um, I can probably explain it better on the floor plan. But so the, the house is jotted a little bit. So the cantilever, just on the left side of the screen where that the bottom left bedroom is, so the way the cantilever will, I know we saw the visual, but the way the cantilever will, will be is it'll just be a slanted roof in the middle of the house that meets that corner across the whole front of the house. So it won't come past that front bedroom. It would just be a nice, it's a design look. It's, it's not, we're not gonna walk on it. It's a design cantilever in the front that will meet that bottom right corner, sorry, bottom left corner of the front porch, all the way across to the, the right side of the family room. Does that make sense, Jen?
Hmm.
It's not building underneath it?
So it's here.
No, so just the walkway would be right through it. So it's kind of a, it's really just for design, just to, to basically overhang on the front porch, and the walkway would be from the, the right side of the house to the left front door. Um, just cantilevering. I think it's, what was that? Uh, no, it comes out, not the full walkway. It comes out four feet, which meets that left side of the house there.
So it's gonna provide a cover for the, it'll provide a cover for the porch plus a little bit along the front.
Yes.
First floor, but it's not living space. It's just a roof. It's like an awning.
Right, cuz the way we're gonna do it, again, design, we're gonna run the floor joists all the way out through the front of the house, and we call it a free roof cuz the floor joists will stay one piece out, and then you just cantilever right off with two by fours to, to get that nice design, or else it kinda looks like just one, one big box. So, um, no, again, living space stays directly on the foundation. That's just a nice cantilever look to kinda break up the house, um, and have a little overhang.
You need, I'm sorry, but you need to come to the microphone, please.
I wanna know how much square footage it's gonna add to the impervious surface, cuz, and I can answer the question of why he bought the house here. Waterfront, or, you know, there's a lake there, and he gets rights to it. So, and I'm the lake lady. Okay, so I'm interested in the impact on the lake. So I just want.
Yeah. Um, so no impact to the lake whatsoever. Um, in terms of square footage, I, I, it doesn't add any square feet. It's just a, a roof overhang. Um, I mean, I guess livable square foot, it adds nothing. Um, in terms of roof square feet, we can calculate that. I, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but, um, there's impact to the lake. There is, there is none, and, and no square footage added in terms of livable space.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Nigren. I'm at one oh seven Wood Pond, and like my husband said, um, Alexander approached us. He's been very cordial. Uh, I never realized it's going to be almost four thousand square feet. When we purchased our home twenty-five years ago, I never would have purchased our home with such a big budding property. So, um, as wonderful as it sounds, I'm, I'm having a hard time with it, just the size of it. Um, and we've been in the neighborhood for twenty-five years.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
Can I respond to that? Do you mind?
Uh, sure, you can go ahead and check online. That's fine.
Yeah, understanding the, the size of the house, but I do wanna renote that although it is a one-story home, it does have a full walk-up attic, um, spanning across the whole house. So in terms of size of home, um, from where Teresa and Bill's houses, the only additional size factor is about eight feet higher, just based on eight-foot wall and another, another slope of the roof, so it will not be substantial. Substantial issue, issue in terms of size from their, their point of view or other neighbors, it won't make a huge, um, it, it won't look as monstrous as it may sound.
You're being Googled as you speak, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, a street view will be helpful.
This never drops where it thinks it could drop, so someone more familiar with.
Delay.
It's eighty-three. All right, Alexander, can you help me?
You were right, you were right before.
You had it, yeah.
Oh, right?
You had it first time, yeah.
All right.
Right there, yep.
Okay.
Yep, so again, just so that you can even see the, a little cantilever over the front porch right now, that's just gonna extend out to meet that left side. Um, and I believe it's four feet in the plant, so nothing substantial. And then again, just in vision, eight-foot walls going up, and then the roof on top. And if you look around the neighborhood, the house, so that's Jan's house right there, and then the house to the left of that, um, sorry, keep going.
Oh, you want to, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The house right there is.
Navigate Google apps through that.
So there's a example of a, a height of the neighborhood of, of that town, so so it'd be similar height to that house, I assume. Yeah, so again, nothing abnormal for the neighborhood, um.
Can we see the houses next door too?
Or Shannon's or her key?
No, that's all right.
You're doing great, you're doing great.
It's not the easiest to navigate.
This is subject, it's easy when you're like intimately familiar with the neighborhood, and I'm, this is pretty good, but uh, so this is, this is the one-eleven, uh, Wood Pond. This is the house immediately to the north.
Yep, and that is also a two-story home.
And then that's the house to the south, um.
So that's Bill and Teresa's house, which is also a two-story home.
That's a cape.
Yeah.
It's a cape.
So your house right now is considered a ranch?
Yes.
Yeah, cuz there's no dormers. So there's no dormers, and there's no
Right.
functional living area in it at the moment. So it gets classified as a ranch as opposed to a cape.
Right.
Okay, good, good enough?
Yeah, we wanna check. Good enough with everybody?
I walked this route. I know, I just wanna make sure.
Okay. Should we check online?
Oh, oh, yeah, sure. If anyone's called in to offer comment regarding the application for one-eleven Wood Pond Road, please raise your hand. Using the feature in Zoom, you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in to offer comment or has questions on one-eleven Wood Pond Road, please raise your hand using the, uh, feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Or everybody okay closing the public hearing? Good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, hereby close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Any discussion? I'm good.
I'm good.
Yeah, I guess I just, this is, uh, this has come up before in terms of size of house, you know, R twenty zone, what the limitations are, and, and how far we go over or under. And we made a decision, I don't know, a couple months ago, with that house, with that barn that we decided for, you know, where a couple of large, large houses could go on that property, because, you know, the fear that they wouldn't sell. So I guess I have concerns about, I, I understand looking at the house and knowing, I know this house very well. I've walked this neighborhood. Actually, I always liked the house. Um, but understanding that if you're gonna build up, you know, you, you know, there's already two garages there, is that one built into the house, and there's one outside of the house. So it only makes sense to go up from there. Um, it is adding a whole other story, so it's gonna be significantly larger, and I know that whole strip of homes are all, they all are smaller on that side of the road. Across the street, they're much larger, the ones right on the lake, and people have been adding on. So, you know, it's, it's always a dilemma for me to decide, you know, because it's so far over. Um, it is hard to not go so far over in building a second floor in this house, so because of, because of that built garage, I think that makes it hard.
Yes, I, I feel your, I, I understand completely. I, I agree. It's, it makes a lot of sense, logical during construction. If you're going in, go in, do it all in one as opposed to piecemeal it, but it is going to be a much bigger house. So, I don't know.
But the footprint isn't changing.
That is very good.
He's already got a walk-up attic, so right, just walls and windows. I think I, I agree with your sentiment, Dave, that these are always sort of challenging decisions to make. Um, and, and each one is unique, and to me, the fact that it's staying in the footprint makes a big difference to me. I've always sort of read this regulation to be more about preventing the sort of McMansion.
When it keeps.
The one, you know, the, the house that expands and becomes this giant footprint, and I don't feel like they're doing that here and doing it in a way that it still fits with the community that's, it's a part of. That's, that's just my opinion.
Right, yeah. And like I said, the garage is for me is kind of what does that, is that, I, I would, I would do the same thing. I would ask to do the same thing.
Yeah.
Very true.
All right, we're ready for a motion in a second.
All right, um, I would like to, um.
Oh, okay. You got it? You want me to do it?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, um, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by Alexander Farah and Holly Benson for a special permit to expand a home in excess of thirty-two hundred square feet total at one-eleven Wood Pond Road in the R twenty zone.
Second. All those in favor? I opposed. Motion passes. Best of luck to you.
Good luck.
All right, our third public hearing, Farmington Historical Society, Inc., application for special permit for charitable and philanthropic uses to house headquarters and one accessory apartment at seven-twenty-nine Farmington Avenue.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Reeve. I'm with, uh, Scully Nixon Reeve at seventy-nine Main Street in Unionville. Uh, with me is Jade Bombara. He's the president of the Historical Society, and I see several of his members, uh, hung in here to the end as well. We have nothing about guns or lakes or signs. Uh, I'd like to give you an overview of, uh, of the site and the approval that we're, uh, that we're looking for, and then let Jade describe the, the mission. We're both gonna be brief as well, uh, the mission of the, of the society and how we would like to utilize this property. Uh, the sign was posted on the site. I put it up myself. I sent Sandy a picture of it, and I also sent her uh, the certified mail receipts to all the neighbors within two hundred feet. So seven-twenty-nine Farmington Avenue, it's a five and two-thirds acre site. It's on the south side of Route Four at the eastern entrance to Farmington Village, uh, roughly opposite the intersection with Mountain Spring Road, and it sits way up above the road. Uh, for a long time, I didn't realize there was actually a house up there. But it's, it is, as you heard earlier, it's a very heavily traveled section of town, and the house is quite, uh, quite interesting. It's a very large Tudor-style single-family home. It was built in nineteen twenty-six by one of the members of the, uh, well-known Barney family. And, uh, there's also a freestanding garage on the site that shows up, uh, on the site plan, and it's currently vacant and has been vacant for, for several years. The abutting neighbors, uh, to the south and in the west, our largest boundary is with the Hillstead Museum. Uh, there's a small corner of the single-family home at one Main Street, uh, touches our property boundary, right where Shannon has the arrow right now. Uh, that's, uh, Mr. Zip's house. Uh, immediately to the west is the Berkshire Bank. Uh, it's Mr. Chorus's company owns that, uh, property. And of course, across Farmington Avenue to the, to the north, I'm sure you're all familiar with the former Parsons Chevrolet site, now owned by the State DOT. And then the house at one Mountain Spring Road, which is in fact also owned by the Historic Society. And then the house at one Mountain Spring Road, which is in fact also owned by the Historic Society. So all these folks and everybody else within two hundred feet of the property, uh, got a letter, a certified notice of the hearing. We haven't heard any objections. Uh, the house was used as a single-family home, uh, I would say probably eighty years or so, uh, at least three different families lived there. Up until twenty sixteen, when it was acquired by, um, the Alzheimer's Resource Center, also known as Live Well, uh, memory care facility in Southington, and Michael Smith is here tonight, he's the president of Live Well. And at the time, uh, Michael's organization acquired the property, they thought they might be able to put it to use as, uh, as a, some sort of resource facility for Alzheimer's patients and their families. And, uh, actually met informally with this commission, I don't think any of you were on the board at the time, but Shannon was, was around, uh, you remember that? Yeah, it was. Bill Warner, that's right, yeah. It was before the pandemic, is how, it's just cut it. And, uh, uh, so we did, Michael did come in informally, make a presentation, and, and, you know, a lot of things changed in the world over the last five years, and, and one of them is that this no longer fits into, into their plans, so it was kind of serendipitous that, uh, the Historical Society is busting at the seams at their present location, and, uh, and they're looking for some space, uh, to house their collections, uh, headquarters, uh, and to do some programming, which they're not able to do right now. So the property is located in the R eighty, um, you know, minimum square foot of two, uh, two-acre lot size, so we're, we're well over that. And the use we're seeking is a special permit for uses that are allowed in the zone with a special permit, which are charitable and philanthropic uses, philanthropic, excuse me, uses, uh, including one accessory apartment. Uh, and that was a change that was made to regulations a little while ago, and, and the intent here would be if the society is able to some point in time afford a, a paid executive director, Jay could do other things, and, uh, and there'd be a place for someone to live on the property. Uh, I think importantly, there are no exterior building changes planned, there are no exterior site, uh, changes planned at the site at this time. The, the, the use, at least to start, is going to be, going to be very light. Um, there is a narrative attached to the application, the second page, that describes how the, uh, society would use, uh, the site, uh, presently, and also some of their hopeful long-term plans. So with that, I'd like to ask Jade Bombara to elaborate a little bit on what, uh, he sees as the, uh, yes.
Hi, Jay Bombara, thirteen Mountain Road, Farmington. I am here tonight, um, as the president of the Farmington Historical Society. And, uh, I will be mindful of the time, and, uh, Bob probably hit on all the key points, but, um, as most of you hopefully know, um, the Historical Society currently operates out of one thirty-eight Main Street, where we have two cottages. Um, one is actually rented, uh, which is nice, we get some rental income, and the second is our headquarters. Um, because, uh, I think, and it's not me, but my predecessors, uh, some people, some of them are in the room. I've done such a great job, you know, we have taken on an awful lot of material, uh, collections, and we have an incredible collection, uh, of Farmington-related, uh, uh, material. Um, but unfortunately, that means that the cottage, and I know no one's offended by it, has almost become a hoarder's cottage. Um, we can't really even meet there as a board, and, you know, we have a relatively small board at this point, maybe about twelve people. Um, but there's really very little space, certainly unfortunately, no space to allow, uh, people to come in, uh, and access our archives. Uh, people to come in and just see that what we have, and we do have some great things, which everybody I think would be interested in. So, um, we have for a long time been thinking about and knew we needed new space. We were hoping to perhaps work out something, uh, on that Parsons parcel, that's in fact why we bought one Mountain Spring Road. Um, can't really blame anything in particular, but it's just too difficult to work out between the state, the town, our needs, et cetera. So, and also, quite frankly, the, as we thought about it, the expense of trying to build something new would probably be beyond our ability. Um, so at some point, um, you know, we recognize we want to be in that area. Um, and then fortuitously for us, uh, and hopefully for Live Well, um, we realized the property across the street that Live Well was no longer planning on developing that for their, uh, community as well as the Farmington community. Uh, so we were able to negotiate an option to purchase that property. It is seventy-five hundred square feet. Um, it would be, um, an incredible, uh, place, both in terms of its site or, uh, promotion, uh, next to the Hillstead, which would be wonderful. We could hopefully work with the Hillstead and get people, their crowds to come to us and maybe vice versa. Um, and also do some things with them. Um, but most importantly, I think, is it does a couple of things for the Historical Society as we continue to move its mission forward. Um, you know, it would give us significant and appropriate space for our archives, and perhaps archives of other institutions that may want to partner with us to, to manage their archives. Um, it would give us plenty of space for both permanent exhibitions, and you could think about some of the fun things you could do, whether it's Amistad-related, Farmington Canal-related, uh, Miss Porter's related, whatever it might be, uh, as well as temporary exhibitions. So, you know, for, for changing exhibitions like, uh, a museum or others might do. Um, and then also, just as importantly, meeting space, uh, and, uh, ultimately for programming space. Hopefully, we could do, they have wonderful, large living room, um, that would hold, you know, up to maybe thirty people that we could have, um, you know, lectures and other programs there, uh, as well as other types of programs. Um, so, you know, at this point, um, we're very optimistic, uh, and Michael's here, that we're going to be able to close on the, uh, on the transaction. Obviously, one of the things we need before we can do that is to make sure that we have the zoning approval, uh, so that we can, uh, uh, close on the house and use it for our purposes, otherwise, obviously, it wouldn't work. Um, I think I'll conclude with that, but I'm obviously going to be here and happy to take questions if you want more context or details.
Thank you. You guys all set? All right, great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, Commissioners, Matt, any questions?
I guess, uh, just, the only question I have is just general hours of operation.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, a good question. I mean, I, again, we are currently an all-volunteer organization. Um, you know, we would not, at, we first, at, at first, plan on being open, you know, seven, certainly seven days a week. I would think we would try, once we're set up, to at least be open on the weekends, although, you know, and that would probably be, you know, typical weekend hours, people might show up ten to four or something like that. Uh, the other would be, if we were going to use it for programming, presumably that would be in the early evening, um, say seven o'clock, but certainly no later than nine or ten. Um, and, you know, I don't think we, you know, I, I'd look, I'd love to tell you, we're going to get a hundred people to show up or something, but unfortunately, reality says, you know, I would think thirty is the right number to think about, and at most, maybe thirty cars, actually, for that matter, too, on the property. Um, but, you know, hopefully, our programming could draw twenty-five to thirty people, and that would be, to me, a successful program.
Okay.
So answer the question?
No, getting back to hours?
Uh, I think I said, um, you know, during the week, we probably won't be open at first. If we were to be open, or we were going to, you know, go onsite because somebody wanted to access the archives, it would probably be ad hoc. Um, but if we were to be on the weekends, I would say probably Saturday, Sunday, maybe ten to four. Um, not much later than that. And then again, if we had programming, uh, we would have people onsite probably between six-thirty and nine o'clock. Our board meetings, we've been doing them virtually because we can't fit in the thing, so we've been doing them at five. I think we were going to meet in person, I'm looking over here. Uh, you know, we'd probably have to push that out to six or seven, but we'd certainly be out of there by nine o'clock. I will point out, as, uh, uh, Bob did, that, you know, we're not next to anybody. In fact, it's better if we're doing it in the evening because there's less traffic, but, uh, you know, other than Berkshire Bank, uh, uh, I don't think that, uh, you know, there'd be anybody to be bothered by our cars or, uh, uh, lights, whatever, at that time, but does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Bob, anything else? Um, yeah, parking comes to mind, and I, I see notes on here. Shin, how, how's that working? Do we base it on square footage of the building? Do we base it on, um, rough attendance?
So in this particular case, it would be attendance, and that's one of the reasons why I think it would be appropriate. And the driveway is very long and circuitous. There is a turnaround area at the top of the driveway. If they were going to have an event that had thirty-ish people, they would need to program that out, um, as to how they plan on managing the, the parking appropriately on that drive, because there's also, not only is circuitous, but there's also a decent grade to it.
Right.
Um, and that's also, I think, anything greater than thirty, we're going to probably start needing something more formal, uh, from that.
So would handicap parking fall into that too, or since it's a really not a open-for-business type business, would it not really require it?
Mr. Hard, Attorney Reeve could address how they plan to, uh, uh, accommodate that if needed. I don't.
Plenty of space there, uh, to park. However, however you need it. We weren't proposing any changes to the site plan at this point, so there wouldn't be any formal marked-out spaces, but we could certainly accommodate, uh, plenty of cars at the top of the hill.
Yep, okay. So there's really not going to be any, like, designated parking per se?
That's, that's correct.
Come as you want.
Yeah, yeah, at this point, right?
Okay. Um, lighting? Since it is going to be an evening-type event, uh, venue, are we doing anything with lighting?
We're not proposing any changes at all for lighting or anything like that at this point. I mean, the, the, I'm not sure if we focused on this enough, but the primary purpose right now is a headquarters for, for the, uh, for the society. So they'll have their board meetings there, uh, they'll have the archives there, and there's a great hope that as time goes by, there will be an opportunity to expand the mission. And when we talk with Shannon, uh, we recognize that if we get there and we're bringing in more than thirty people at a time, we're going to be coming back to you with a, with a site plan.
Okay.
Uh, we felt that the site, the way it's laid out right now with five-plus acres, uh, a long driveway, a turnaround at the top, uh, we can accommodate the stress that will be, uh, placed by the use that we're going to propose, at least for the beginning. And if we get beyond that, then we'll be back with a more formal application.
Okay, so, yeah, you just clarified. So it's basically going to be a meeting house in hopes of opening it up to a venue at some point.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. All right, you know, I'm good.
No questions?
Liz?
No question, just I think it's a great use because that's a great house, and it would be great to have someone in it.
Yes.
Especially you guys.
Dave?
Yeah, I was looking online at the pictures. It's, it's amazing inside, uh, if you need somebody to rent.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, maybe I would go. Um, just, uh, I, I did notice, and actually in the advertisement for it, they were talking about moving the driveway. Is that still happening?
That's, that's happened. The state relocated the driveway as part of the
And see.
Crazy corner work.
See the.
Yeah.
Yep.
See the shadow? That used to be, the driveway used to come out right there.
Yeah.
Kind of crazy.
Yeah.
Take your life in your hands.
Yeah, less crazy now, yeah.
Close your eyes and pull out on the root fork.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great use. I, I, you know, I previously lived in West Hartford, and, uh, the Webster House, which is their Historical Society, is very well-used for such a tiny space. This space could be used for so much, and I really hope that, you know, I could see us doing a lot of pro, or you doing a lot of programming there, but that's exciting.
Um, I echo that sentiment. Thank you for your presentation. I have no, uh, no questions. I think it's a great use as well.
I'm going to echo all the echoes, too. I think it's great. Um, I hope you guys can get into the space soon and go from there, but we're going to, I think, before we get there, we're going to open things up to the public now and
Sure.
see what comments we have. So if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for or against, come on up. State your name and address for us.
My name is Betty Koykendall. I live at fifteen Whispering Rod Road in Unionville. I'm past president of the Historical Society. I've been the town historian twice. I'm retired from everything now. I want to live to see this happen. And I hope you will approve it because I think it's the best idea they've had since the Parsons lot, which turned out to be a zilch. And I think it could be not only very good for the Historical Society, but good for the town of Farmington.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Okay. Take your time.
Yeah, Joanne Lawson, nine Prattling Pond Road, also a past president of the Farmington Historical Society and a current volunteer. Um, I do just want to say, at our current headquarters at one thirty-eight Main Street, we do get people that come into town sometimes, like Hart descendants, Demme descendants, Coles descendants, that want to come stop somewhere in town and learn about the town. So we do have people come randomly, you know, it's not always on the weekends. But I do also just want to make one comment about having an apartment there, you know, at one thirty-eight, one forty, we do have one forty as an apartment, which is a great use of the space. And I think that it's a great use as a space here also, but I, I see that Jay mentioned that we would probably want it to be for our uh, director or something, and I just want to say that, um, Simsberry Historical Society just got a director, but their director is a local person, so wouldn't want to live there. And I wouldn't want to restrict us to that. Uh, I think it would be a great place for an apartment, and it's good to have somebody on site. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Shannon, we'll check online.
We do have a written correspondence that came in, and then we'll, we'll take.
Thank you, thank you for reminding.
I'll forget about this, so.
Perfect.
We had a written correspondence come in from the Farmington Land Trust, uh, dated the eighteenth. And, and from Kate Grady Benson, uh, who is the executive director for the land trust in support of the, uh, the conversion of seven twenty-nine to the headquarters for the Farmington Historical Society. So it's up on the screen, and it has been shared with the commission in advance as well as the applicant. And then with that, we can go to if anyone has called in and wants to offer comment. Uh, we do have a hand-raised, uh, Portia Corbett. Uh, Portia, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Um, hi, everyone. I just wanted to say hi and just commend the Historical Society for yet thinking of preserving another house for Farmington and creating, um, a hub of something that will be so recognizable as the town's brand of history as you come into our town of Farmington, besides, uh, putting on programs and preserving all Farmington's history. So I, I just, as a past president and, and, and now vice president, I just wanted to say it's just great that our board and our members are behind us on, uh, uh, continuing with this endeavor. And thank you, Michael Smith, for, uh, this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If anyone else has called in to offer comment on the application for seven-two-nine Farmington Avenue, please raise your hand. Using the feature in Zoom, you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Mr. Chair, there are other hands raised.
Okay. Any last questions from any commissioners? Good, closing the public hearing. Hereby close the public hearing. Can we get a motion in a second?
I move that we accept the application from the Farmington Historical Society Incorporated for a special permit for charitable and philanthropic uses to house, to house its headquarters and one accessory apartment at seven twenty-nine Farmington Avenue in the R eighty zone.
Second. All those in favor? I opposed. Motion passes. Congratulations, good luck. It's great. Over to Mrs. Rutherford. Getting formal at the end of the meeting.
So I wanted to revisit and reintroduce our residential housing regulation review with, um, with this commission. I know that some of you are hold over from our twenty-twenty-three endeavors, and some are new. So the agenda review included the link to the twenty-twenty-three endeavors, and then this is a new article. And then this is a new article. It was a five-part series completed by attorney Hollister, who is really renowned in the state with respect to affordable housing and his work with affordable housing in general and the eight dash thirty G regulation, among other regulations with the Connecticut General Statutes. So I wanted to share this with the commission. I have read it. I admittedly have not read all the links to their report as part of the study group that attorney Hollister makes reference to and he was a part of, as part of this work. So I have not read that additional information yet, but I did read the report and was intrigued enough that I thought it was worth sharing with the commission since we've had some applications with, quite a few applications with respect to housing as of late, whether it's regular market rate apartments or affordable apartments or our ADUs. We have also been approached about, staff has, as you approve the regulation or the acceptance for the regulation change for the RDM zone. A brief version of that is posted on the website. I need to, I've scheduled a conference call with attorney DeCrescenzo for the middle of this week before we will finalize that document. We're checking on a couple of things that are recent changes with the Connecticut General Statutes approved with the legislature. So, and then we've got other people that are making inquiries about what we've had termed basically our organically affordable, affordable housing, right? The, the little A, affordable housing, that it's just, is it a two-family or a three-family or a four-family house? Or the ADUs, so those things that are perhaps more affordable and more entry level, but don't necessarily count with respect to our eight dash thirty G numbers. And that ten percent that makes us not, for lack of a better word, susceptible to an eight dash thirty G application, understanding that the need for the housing, when you look at a housing needs assessment, both for the state of Connecticut or for Farmington, it exceeds ten percent. It's simply the, that threshold is there so that it allows the, the community or municipality to put a pause and have a little more discretion as to how that housing comes into its community. It's not necessarily a, a threshold of a need being met. And again, our needs are met in a variety of ways because some of our housing, again, we have our ADUs, we have our two and three family homes that are available in Farmington that have a range of affordability, some of them meeting these criteria, but they are not deed restricted, so they're not recognized formally. So, again, the purpose was to share this article so that the information is there. I thought it was, it, it's not hard reading. It, for me, I found it interesting reading and excuse me?
Yeah, you did.
It was.
It was in the email.
Documents.
So I, I emailed it as an attachment and then it is posted on the website, or it will be. And it is, it will be posted to our, the affordable, our housing link, which was included in the agenda review. So the housing link I put at the bottom of the agenda review. So when we click.
Yeah, you can't look on it for some reason.
I can't, I can't do it from here. Were you able?
No, that's what I'm saying. I tried it at home.
Fix that. Okay, I'll fix the link.
Attach those to the email.
So. But we will, I'll get that corrected. So that that's available. And it's just, again, just to kind of keep this conversation rolling, share information as it comes about if this is not going away. And if you're tracking anything, it's really quite a hot topic. And it's not just Connecticut, it's pretty much coast to coast, border to border. So, yeah, we can continue to have active or passive conversations about this, but I wanted to share this information, obviously, as there's legislature changes, then we'll keep you informed of those. But we're getting inquiries. So as those inquiries come, then we'll start to bring those to the commission. And there are some thoughts with perhaps our business restricted zone, which currently does not allow housing to perhaps allow housing for in those areas, some of them are transitional zones, right? The business restricted is transitioning from our Unionville Center to our residence, Farmington Center to residence. And so a lot of times those have been homes that have been converted to businesses. And right now, once you make that conversion, it's an all or nothing. And so is the thought, do we allow that business on the bottom floor and require it to remain commercial on the bottom floor, but allow flexibility on the second floor? So it would be a mixed use, which typically, again, is not permitted in the BR zone. It's only allowed in the center zones and some of the other specialty zones that have recently been penned and, and approved. So, and then again, do we branch out and allow two-family, three-family, four-family in more of the zones in Farmington? Even if we test the water as a special permit use, as opposed to and as a right. But right now they're allowed a special permit. Our nine goes up to four-family, our twelve goes to two-family. That's it. So those are some other things to start to think about. So that's all I, I had unless somebody has other questions or inquiries about this topic.
I had a couple of things on that, Shannon. Does the P O C D come up for review at some point?
Soon.
That's what I was thinking.
Will be soon. So the addendum to the P O C D is dated twenty eighteen. And so the new P O C D or an addendum to it is due in twenty twenty-eight.
Okay.
So it's a ten-year cycle.
So we've got a few.
So we've got a little bit of time on it.
Okay.
But we are tracking it in our capital improvement budget because I've got a request in so that we can get assistance with a planning consultant for a rewrite. The last full writing of it was in two thousand eight.
Yeah.
And if you go back to the ones before that, I'd have to go, it, it seems that, right, it's forever. And so many things have changed.
Yeah.
And while I don't necessarily want the history to be lost from that document, I think it definitely needs to be updated so it's more current and relevant even how we use documents and formatted, et cetera. So I think, so we have that in, in the queue. But my thought is that's really gonna start the end of twenty twenty-five or into twenty-six to start thinking about how we want it restructured. And are we going to do immunity meetings, right? So twenty twenty-six would be like an active work session year for the P O C D, which is fun because I have to operate in fiscal years for money.
Yeah.
Supposed to calendar years. With my commissions and
Yep.
How my deadline, some of the deadlines work, but so, but twenty twenty-six, I'm thinking would be kind of that planning year, if you will, and information sessions and community meetings, if that's the direction we want to go. And again, I think having a consultant help that can, that's done it before and in other perhaps similar communities can help drive that. And then in twenty twenty-seven, kind of the actual writing and fine tuning. Because not only does this body have to hold a public hearing and review and approve it, but so does town council.
Yep.
So there's a bunch of hearings and legal dates and things that need to get hit. So, so I'm probably looking at an RFP for the consultant at the end of twenty-five. Some active fun stuff in twenty-six, some hardcore writing in twenty-seven so that, and that, that'll be the first half of twenty-seven so that it can be adopted. And then in the second half of twenty-seven. So.
Okay.
Yes. And then our affordable housing plan is also a requirement of the state. That was adopted in twenty twenty-one and that has a five-year horizon, so that has to be redone in twenty-six. So, but that I think is a little less cumbersome for us. I think whether or not we get some assistance on that one, we could probably do the majority of that ourselves since we've got a decent platform to work from. And maybe use some of these conversations if we continue just kind of chatting and bantering around some things on housing in general. That we can get perhaps some more concrete action items.
Yeah, the other thing I just wanted to, I read, I read through it quickly as well. And I was actually like a little taken aback. He's clearly a proponent for more centralized zoning and some of his commentary in there about, I don't even know what the right word is, but the way some commissions operate, sort of caving to the public opinion and so on and so forth. I just, and maybe I just want to put it on the record, I think this commission's outstanding in my five years so far on it in terms of upholding regulations, asking the right questions, doing the right thing. I, I actually took offense at that because I know how good.
Understanding.
And I know there's a lot of commissions just from talking to you.
That, that wasn't, that's a broad stroke for the entire state of Connecticut. So even as you tiptoe through news articles or our judicial, right, and what's up in front.
Yep.
So we're very fortunate, I, I, I think, in how this commission operates and has operated even, you know, since my tenure and, and the immediate past. So it's not necessarily the norm. And interestingly, there are still commissions and even some of the, the developers who've been before us that work in multiple communities will tell you, like, really eye-opening conversations about affordable housing with commissions that don't feel that it's necessary.
Yep.
You know, communities that flat out refused to do an affordable housing plan. And planners struggling with their own commission to try to get an affordable housing plan done or approved.
Not here.
Right? So, so it was just, yeah, i- it's, it depends on, on where you are and how, how that dialogue works. And so, so that was a broad brush of, and, and yeah, and if you were to read our affordable housing plan against, you know, some of the comments made in it, that five-part review. And, and I haven't, like I said, I haven't dove into the study specifically. You know, ours didn't go as far as saying, hey, let's designate these areas for affordable housing. And I don't even know that that's appropriate. I mean, I understand his point of view, but I don't know that that's appropriate. For, uh, because some of the places we've put affordable housing, I wouldn't have necessarily, I wouldn't have gone, okay. You know, I wouldn't have designated that, you know, the sixteen hundred New Britain Avenue that came to be.
Right.
So, you know, there's, I, I think it can be done to say that we're, we're open to it, but we still want to have a say in how it's done.
Yep.
So I think you can get both. Anyway.
So you talked about, you know, possibly looking at zoning, changes of how we deal with certain zones. How does that happen? Like, I don't know that spontaneously happens during a meeting to like we have a subcommittee that looks at that. Is it something we ask you to bring to us more information on how that would work?
We can. So we can either, we could do a subcommittee meeting. We could, if there's interest in additional information, then we could do what we had done in twenty twenty-three was a work session. Kind of at the end of the meetings, our meetings. So our meetings here have been on the lighter side. I'm not advocating that we do a work session till eleven o'clock in the evening. But, you know, if you've got a, a half hour or forty-five minutes, we could do a work session at the end of a, a meeting. Understand, you know, a cutoff time of nine thirty or whatever the case is. We could set separate meetings. It could be a subcommittee that reports back. So there's a different, there's a couple of different ways to do that if there's interest in starting to look at some of this again. And at the end of the day, it does, the, the bandwidth is somewhat staff limited. So is, so yes, it would require Garrett and I to start pulling together some additional information. And then getting some feedback on priorities as well. So I will tell you, we're looking at the regulations overall. So the regulations, there's clerical edits, there's things, lighting, parking, our parking lot lighting reg needs a revamp and Garrett's been working on that. So there's other things, just again, clerical things and notes as we, we update certain sections and then pull things through and get, okay, we've got to reprint our regulations and we transfer our, our hand notes over and whatnot. So some of that has to get done as well. So, so I think this is an, an introductory. And, and yes, if we wanted to start taking an active look, then it will require a little active time and, and additional work on everybody's part.
So it's a process for kicking that off?
Well, what do, I, I guess, what do, so what do you want to do exactly?
Well, so I know every once in a while you'll come up and you'll, you say things like that. And I, like, how do, how do we do that? Is this something that Scott kind of proposes?
So I guess if everybody, if you want to do a subcommittee, you could do a subcommittee and then you'd have to decide, again, what you want to look at specifically to start to work through. I would suggest that we start with, I can make sure the link works and the link is working for everybody. But take a look at that information and what's already available. And then take a look at, and read through the report from attorney Hollister. And then we can have a follow-up conversation to say exactly, is there a consensus? You know, I, as part of it would be, is there a consensus on the commission on what to, to tackle and how do you want to do it? Do you want to do it as a subcommittee or do you want to do it as an entire group, as work sessions at the end of the meeting? So, and that's something that, that you folks, are we drive it to a certain extent on the staff level? If we're saying things that need to get changed, like I said, right now we're looking, I thought I was gonna do it in August and I didn't get to the whole entire regulation in August. So Garrett's been waiting on me.
What does our November meeting look like right now?
November meeting is quite light at the moment. We'll have our battery storage back.
Yep.
And perhaps this RDM regulation.
Yeah, okay. I'm just wondering if we can read that article that Shannon referenced and at least just have an initial discussion. Doesn't have to be a huge thing, but at least, I mean, I don't. It's a fairly quick read. I think three weeks between meetings this time.
Correct. There is a three-week cycle.
So we have a little bit extra time. We can commit to reading that and just have thoughts coming into that. We can maybe at least come up with a direction at the November meeting.
Our next meeting's the thirteenth.
Yeah.
That's right. It's a Wednesday too. Yeah, make note. It's a Wednesday.
Because of veterans.
Oh, right.
Do we have access to data on what Farmington looks like in terms of our housing and, and needs, right? Because that would really be the starting point for any analysis is, is what are the type of households that we have? Where are they evolving? And use that to feed into whatever thinking we would do. Do we have?
Is in the affordable, the Affordable Plan Document or Affordable Housing Plan Document, which is on.
I think I've seen it somewhere.
Yep, it's on the website.
Yes.
Yep. So it's got a needs assessment in there. It dates to twenty twenty-one. And then in attorney Hollister's article, he makes reference, there was, I believe, a state needs assessment was done. So, and, and he, he even made reference in his article that he didn't feel it was necessary for the municipalities to redo a needs assessment with a revamp. But I don't believe it's overly difficult to do. And Nancy Parent. And Nancy Parent, our Director of Community Services, would have most of that data. So, but we've got a platform or a benchmark to start from. And we can go from there.
And I don't know how many people here did. I mean, I know I read it, but if you haven't read our piece, P O C D, it, it's a pretty good read. And it's long. It's two hundred and something pages. But it gives you a good idea of what direction we want to go. You know, so that coupled with this gives you kind of, okay. Let's think about this.
Okay.
Anything else for Shannon?
I have a couple of questions.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna make one other point. So thirty four West District. The
That was on my list.
Yeah, so
Just one point.
Ms. Phillyn filed her rebuttal to, as required by October eleventh, it ended up posted in the judicial system on October fourteenth or fifteenth. But it was filed, so we are, as of now, still tracking a December ninth court date.
Okay.
And that's it. That's all I have for updates to share.
Five Corners Garage. The, the new gas station.
The gas station, yes.
Did that end up going on blight or did they comply? I know at one point I saw dumpster, then I didn't.
Nope. So there's a demo permit in, and the demo permit had been held up. I think I explained at the last meeting.
Oh, I was.
That got released. So I'd have to look online to see if it's been signed off because they need all the they need to demonstrate all the utility disconnects prior to the demo being released. The forty two Colt Highway. Three forty two Colt Highway Gas Station. So I can double check, but they, they have applied for the demo permit. It was, it had been hung up with our tax office. That's released. I signed off on it. I don't know if it has been issued and paid for it at this point. So I can check and follow up.
Okay. Midway.
Midpoint.
Midpoint?
Midpoint, midway, midpoint. That just changed hands or that sold, correct?
Portion, just a portion. Just a portion of it.
That's still in hold?
Excuse me?
Still in a holding pattern?
Correct. Yeah, we haven't been contacted by the new property owner and my understanding is they purchased just the part that had been owned by Jeff Scott.
Gotcha. Okay. And now the easy one. The sign got denied tonight. So what's the next steps for that? Either complies with a signed size or?
Well, there's a valid approval from twenty nineteen. I don't know that a sign expires, a sign approval expires. I'd have to take a look. It's not really a site plan or so they could go ahead and install a sign from twenty nineteen. My guess is they're going to leave what's there understanding the owners. So, but I, it's their, their choice. So they can come back with something different. It's at their discretion.
Got you. Okay.
For now, I presume they intend to leave what's there.
Okay. Whoop.
Anything else?
Anybody? All right. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes of the October seventh meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October seventh, twenty twenty four Town PNC Commission meeting.
Second.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Abstentions.
Here.
Meeting adjourned.